Okay. Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:04 PM. It is Wednesday, November 4th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would the city secretary please call a roll?
Mitchell? Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Sheehan?
Here.
Rizzo?
I think his phone's just messed up.
Vialobos?
Tobias?
Here.
Yes, here. Okay. Did Councilor Ellison register is here yet?
Not yet.
Okay, we have four members present. We have a quorum. Next up, citizen comments period. Do we have anyone registered to speak online or at City Hall who's filled out a comment form?
No one has registered and no one is present.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up, executive session. Councilor Sheehan.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics. Number one, pending or contemplated litigation or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071. K-47, low income development on Philomena, changeable electronic variable message sign, 104 South Burleson, New Haven assisted living and memory care delinquent utility account, addendum to the economic development agreement between RR HPI LP and the City of Kyle. And then number four, convene into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city, Project Giving Tree and Project Shamrock.
All right, it looks like we're ready to go. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Motion to reconvene?
Second.
Second. It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Ellison. Is there any discussion on motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now. Councilor Sheehan.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize negotiations on and sign the addendum to the economic development agreement between RR HPI LPI and the City of Kyle in a form approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Sheehan, seconded by Councilor Vialobos, that we approve the agreement with HPI in a manner consistent with the city attorney and on behalf of the city manager. Is there any further discussion? Scott, do you want to give a statement about what this is? You can keep it simple. It's pretty simple.
Mayor and Council, Scott Sellers for the record. This is an agreement that allows the city to extend its third-party building inspection company ATS to do specific inspections for the facility in the HPI industrial park.
Sounds good. Must have a need. I guess that's good, too. So is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Was that the only action we needed to take? I think it was.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Mayor?
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Sheehan, that we adjourn. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned. We will stand by for 60 seconds to switch over the feeds and get ready to gavel in the Good evening, everyone. The time is 7:18 PM. It is Wednesday, November 4th, 2020, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Sheehan, go ahead.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Would the city secretary please call a roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
Present.
Sheehan?
Here.
Rizzo?
Here.
Vialobos?
Here.
All right, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, appro-
Yes, here.
I'm sorry, it's cutting in and out, my feed is, so.
Yeah, we had forgotten Councilor Tobias, but he said present.
Okay, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the city council's special meeting minutes from October 20th, 2020, and the city council meeting minutes from October 20, 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Sheehan, seconded by Councilor Rizzo, that we approve the minutes for October 20th, both special and regular. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. Do we have anyone registered to speak online, or has anyone filled out a form, or is anyone present at City Hall who would like to speak?
This is Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications. Good evening, council. I just wanted to take a minute to allow our two newest Team Kyle members to introduce themselves. We now have a marketing and multimedia specialist, as well as a video production specialist, so I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Xander Baker, and I am the marketing and multimedia specialist with the communications department.
Hello, my name is Grant Bowling. I'm the videographer for the City of Kyle, and I also have been doing the broadcast section a bit, too.
Welcome.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Welcome all. You marked the completion of our mission to bolster our communications department, so welcome to the City of Kyle. Samantha's been doing great. I hope you're having a good time. Do you have any other comments?
There's no one else.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. It is now closed. Next up, agenda item number four, presentation, Veterans Day City Council proclamation. Councilor Rizzo.
I'd like to yield the floor to Councilmember Vialobos to read the proclamation, if he's willing to. We might have lost him. I'll go ahead and read it. City of Kyle City Council proclamation, whereas a number of City of Kyle residents and staff have served our great nation in the United States Armed Forces, and it is appropriate that their patriotic and unselfish service be suitably recognized and commemorated, and whereas the City of Kyle celebrates the employment of these veterans who have served our country proudly and now serve in both public and private sector jobs in our community, and whereas the citizens and coworkers are our sons, daughters, husbands, wives, friends, and neighbors who are willingly answered the call to serve, and many have died so that we may live free in this great republic, and whereas these brave citizens have brought honor and distinction to the City of Kyle through their service, and whereas Kyle is home to the VFW Post 1212058, one of the most recognized and distinguished VFWs post in the nation, who stands ready to assist and advocate for our local veterans, and whereas Kyle is also home to the AMVETS Post 115, representing one of our nation's most active veteran services organization and providing valuable services to veterans, to include extensive work with veterans to assist them with applying for veterans' benefits provided for by the Hayes County Veteran Service Office, and whereas it is appropriate that the patriotic and unselfish service and sacrifices of all veterans and their families be suitably recognized and commemorated. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Kyle, Texas, that November 11th, 2020 shall hereafter be known as Veterans Day in the City of Kyle, and do hereby call upon all citizens to show their appreciation to our brave men and women for their service to our great nation and to focus on their achievements with appropriate patriotic displays of the American flag and the participation of veteran activities. Sign and enter on this fourth day of November, 2020. I would just like to add that we have an amazing citizenry of veterans in our community who are very active, and I've been very blessed to work with them, whether it's through the VFW, through the Knights of Columbus, or just in our parishes or in the community. Their resolve and their work ethic and their commitment to community just goes beyond, and I just want to thank them all for their service and for their sacrifices. My brother especially is a veteran and gave 11 years to the Marine Corps, and I know everything that he sacrificed in that time, not being there for the first birth of his first child, and missing football games and basketball games, and everything that these veterans sacrificed is to, is for us, our community, so that we have the opportunity to vote in this nation of ours for who we want and to exercise our free speech. But on top of that, they give selfishly of their time and of all of their strength, and I just want to thank them for all their service and for all they do for us, and may God bless all the veterans.
Thank you, Councilor Rizzo. Any further comments on that?
Yes, Mayor, as, and I've said this before, as the granddaughter of a World War II vet, the daughter of a Vietnam War vet, and the current partner of an active military person now, I thank you for bringing this forward. This means a lot to not only myself, but also to the members of this community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Sheehan.
Thank you, Councilor Sheehan. Councilor Ellison?
Yes, well, I second that, and I believe Councilmember Rizzo has caught the pulse of this council and this community, really, with that proclamation and his words of gratitude and thanks for our men and women and our military services that are currently passed and even given the ultimate sacrifice for our country, to do exactly the things that Councilmember Rizzo and Councilmember Sheehan were talking about, and to do the exact thing that we did yesterday in participating in this republic's democracy through an election. So thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. We certainly appreciate you leading the effort on this with Veterans Day being next Wednesday, and certainly, you know, the city is long overdue on some recognition to our veterans, and I think we are making great strides with that, and we want to continue to work with the VFW and the AMVETS here in Kyle and surrounding areas to continue to show our support and gratitude for our military service members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ellison. Anyone else? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item then. Agenda item number five, presentation by Buie, summarizing Public Safety Center bond, public education activities. Mr. Hendricks.
Mayor, I'm happy to introduce our Buie team to give a presentation on their efforts so far and to congratulate them and everybody else on our committee and to the police department and to the city on the successful bond election from yesterday. So this time, Buie team, it's all yours.
Thank you, Jerry. I appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, Mayor Purton Coach, council members, and city manager Sellers. For those of you who may not know, my name is Ashley Kegley Whitehead, and I am partner and co-founder of Buie and Company. We so appreciate the opportunity to be with you again here virtually and are excited to share a final update on the public education campaign for Proposition A. As a reminder, the City of Kyle hired Buie and Company in late May to begin preparing for community outreach around a potential public education campaign for a public safety center. The RFP for this work specifically outlined the need to communicate the dollar amount for the bond, the effect the tax rate would have on city ratepayers, and the size, use, and overall need for the facility. Over the last five months, our team has worked closely with city and PD staff to understand Kyle's public safety services and the needs of its police department while preparing any and all necessary materials for a public education campaign if a bond was to be called in August. I would like to emphasize that our job was strictly to educate voters, not advocate for or against the bond. This is a delicate balance, as you all understand from the dais, though many community members may not, especially given that this was the city's first formal public education campaign, so I did just want to underscore that sentiment. Our primary objective was to develop and execute a campaign that would ensure community members understood the details of Proposition A so that they could make an informed decision at the ballot. While a significant amount of work has been done by Buie and Company, we were part of a larger team, supported by city staff, the Bond Task Force, as well as your bond legal counsel, Biggerstaff Keith Delgado Acosta. On the heels of Election Day, with unofficial results showing that Proposition A has passed with 55.49% of the vote, we wanted to share a recap of our team's work and summarize the components of our public education campaign. We'll certainly leave time at the end to answer any questions, but with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Patty Hickson. She's been faithfully leading the day-to-day activities for the City of Kyle in this campaign. Patty?
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Mayor and council members. I apologize, we're having a little bit of technical difficulty sharing my screen. I'm going to try one more time, just in case, and if not, I know Samantha was going to attempt. Is this showing up? It looks like it's just showing me. Just one moment. Well, I'll go ahead and get started, just as Samantha hopefully starts screen sharing. Thank you, Samantha. If you'll move to slide four for me, that would be great. Thank you. Well, as Ashley mentioned, our team's work with the city officially kicked off in late May when our team began preparation for a potential bond election to be called this fall. And then on to slide five. Since our kickoff meeting on May 28th, we have met with city staff and/or the Bond Task Force for a total of 23 planning and coordination meetings, and in addition to our weekly team meetings, we've held multiple ad hoc calls with members of the Bond Task Force and city staff to discuss campaign strategy and updates as needed. Prior to the bond election being called by city council on August 17th, our team conducted 11 one-on-one interviews with stakeholders identified by the city as leaders across the community to hear from them what they believe are the needs of the Kyle Police Department and what they want to see from the city in terms of public safety services, and what their reactions would be to a potential bond and the associated tax impact, as well as their recommendations around how to best inform the community about a bond election. And if you'll change to slide six. Based on our team's experience and expertise in public education campaigns for bond elections, along with the unique perspective of these community leaders, we developed our educational messaging and materials to reflect the following priorities. Sharing an accurate project cost and timeline to construct a public safety center if the bond passed. Sharing details on the anticipated financial impact for residents with an emphasis on the tax being deferred until October 2021 in light of COVID. Sharing how the proposed public safety center would address the current inadequacies of the police department facilities and allow for the department to be fully staffed to serve the Kyle's growing population. And sharing how the new facility would serve the entire community through the creation of an emergency operations center, as well as by providing dedicated space to expand community-based programs and services. If you'll move to slide seven, thank you. We also refined our community outreach strategy, prioritizing the following channels that we heard were most important through our conversations with community leaders, as well as in our meetings with the Bond Task Force. Virtual open houses or in-person events where possible, the city's website, social media, especially Facebook, the city's weekly utility newsletter, and ads in the Hayes Free Press and Community Impact. If you'll move to slide eight. As a result of all of this, the Buie and Company team developed a library of materials to provide general election information and educate Kyle residents about Proposition A. Our efforts included designing a logo to build recognition and awareness among community members, which was created in both English and Spanish. And then number 10, we also designed and built two bond webpages, one in English and one in Spanish, with all of the details of the proposed public safety center. After launching the bond webpages on August 18th, our team made nine updates over the course of the campaign to add new FAQs and other important bond information based on community feedback and questions we were receiving. Since its launch, the English webpage has been viewed 2,213 times by 1,860 users within an average time on page of 4 minutes and 9 seconds. The Spanish webpage was viewed 138 times by 73 unique users with an average time on page of 1 minute and 51 seconds. And just for reference, 2 to 3 minutes of time on page for a website is considered excellent engagement, and that reflects that visitors going to the bond website truly were spending time educating themselves, using the materials and the messaging that we provided. And then on to slide 11. Along with the website, we worked with the Bond Task Force to draft, design, and publish a fact sheet, as well as a frequently asked questions document about Proposition A. Both of these documents have been available in English and Spanish from the bond webpages since they were launched, and they were also distributed at our hybrid open house on October 8th, as well as at the Movies in the Park event held by the city on October 16th. Slide 12, please. We also scripted and shot and produced a general bond campaign video about the current police facilities and the proposed public safety center. This video was created with an English voiceover and also produced a second version that had Spanish subtitles. It was embedded on the bond webpage and shown during each of our community open houses, which we'll share more about in just a moment, and since the video was published on YouTube, it has also been viewed independently 188 times. Next slide, please. Our team also scripted and produced a second bond video specific to the current KPD facilities. This video was created in mid-October in direct response to resident questions that were being shared during our open houses and additional questions being received by KPD representatives in the community. One of the things that this council heard our team commit to when we presented on September 1st was being open to input and being flexible and nimble throughout the process of this campaign, and this video in particular reflects that. Since it was published on YouTube on October 22nd, it has been viewed 423 times. Next slide, please. Buie and Company also designed and produced car magnets for city vehicles, and we designed a digital billboard display about Prop A, directing residents to the bond website for more information. We provided the city with a total of 60 car magnets to use on various KPD and other city vehicles, which have been out in the community since early September. The digital billboard has been in rotation on the city's two billboards located off I-35 approximately 700 times since September 30th, when it was running every 10 minutes during high-traffic windows of time, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, excuse me, on weekdays, as well as 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM on weekends. Next slide. We also designed and produced business cards for the police department and city staff to hand out to community members who might ask about Proposition A, along with drafting a phone script to support any calls to the police department or city staff so that they were sure to be able to direct them to the right resources for the bond. A total of 1,200 business cards were provided to the city for distribution to community members. Next slide. We also developed and maintained a social media editorial calendar to support the communications team's work on social channels, with 65 pre-drafted educational posts and 15 custom graphics to support posting 1 to 2 times per week about the bond via the City of Kyle's social media channels, including Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, as well as the police department's Facebook page. We supported the city in responding to a number of community questions shared in the comments of the Facebook page posts, and we created a library of 15 educational posts of suggested content for city council members to share from their own accounts. Next slide. Buie and Company also provided 11 weeks of content for the city's weekly utility e-newsletter, sharing information about the bond from the time it was called, the week that it was called, through last Friday, the last day of early voting. For these newsletters, the city tracked 26,975 opens for the issues, including bond-related content, and from those 11 issues, there were 249 clicks on content specifically related to Proposition A and 835 clicks for general election content. Next slide. We also designed, produced, and coordinated the distribution of a direct mailer that was delivered to every Kyle resident on September 15th, ensuring that every resident had a chance to learn about Proposition A, with details on the proposed public safety center, as well as election information. We worked with Community Impact on this distribution, delivering our mailers to all 21,275 residential addresses in the City of Kyle. All information was provided in English on one side of the mailer and Spanish on the backside. Next slide. We designed and coordinated the placement of print advertisements in the two primary local publications, including the October 7th issue of the Hayes Free Press and the October monthly print issue of Community Impact, which was delivered to all Kyle residents on October 14th. Next slide. And we developed an informational flyer about Proposition A that was distributed at the city's trunk-or-treat Halloween event on October 24th, which had approximately 500 vehicles drive-through. Next slide. In addition to all of the materials just mentioned, we also set up a dedicated email account and hotline where community members could reach out at any time to learn more about Proposition A, which our team managed throughout the campaign. about Proposition A, which our team managed throughout the campaign. This contact information was shared across the materials that we developed to provide residents the opportunity to reach out and have their question answered about Proposition A. Since the bond was called, we received a total of 14 unique inquiries, seven calls and seven emails, all of which our team worked closely with the city to answer using the communications protocol that we developed. Next slide. We also coordinated and hosted a series of five open houses for the community to provide opportunity for residents to learn more about the bond and have dedicated time with representatives from the city to answer their questions. Next slide. Held every Thursday from September 17th through October 8th and on webinar, and on Tuesday, October 13th, these events were primarily virtual, held via Zoom webinars, and they were also live-streamed to the city's Facebook page, as well as the YouTube account and Kyle10. The October 8th event was a hybrid open house, with the option for Kyle residents to attend in person at City Hall with safe social distancing measures in place. And to further promote accessibility for all Kyle residents, we offered Spanish interpretation for three of the five open houses, and closed captioning services were available at our hybrid open house. Next slide. We promoted the open houses using Facebook events, of course, with the support of the communications team, as well as digital flyers. And for the hybrid open house, we also printed 50 posters that went up around the city of Kyle before the event, and our Hays Free Press ad that I mentioned before highlighted the last two open houses. Next slide. Overall, we will, we were able to track a combined total of 161 attendees across Zoom and Facebook for the five events. However, please note that these don't account for YouTube or Kyle10 live viewers. However, each, each open house was recorded and posted to the city's YouTube account, and that was to allow anyone who was unable to attend a live event the chance to learn more about Proposition A. And the five recordings were viewed a combined total of 145 times on YouTube. Next slide. Finally, we worked closely with the city's communication team to support media outreach and coverage about the bond election, providing the following materials. A press release to announce the bond election for a public safety center, once it was called, which the city's communication team shared with media on August 18th. A media alert about a series of community open houses, which was distributed by the communications team on September 16th. And a second media alert specifically for the hybrid open house that was hosted with virtual and in-person components, which was distributed by the communications team to media on August 5th. We also supported the city, as well as members of the Bond Task Force and the mayor, in preparing for three media interviews about the bond election. All of this media outreach and support resulted in 21 unique pieces of coverage about the bond election prior to Election Day, further educating the community and raising awareness about the open houses submitted, about the details of Proposition A. And with that, I'll turn it back to Ashley.
Thank you, Patty. As you all can see, a lot went into this campaign, but it is important that we end with a note of gratitude. Simply put, thank you. We know that the city made an investment by hiring Bowie and Company to lead its public education campaign. And as we close out our work together, I believe the recap and the data Patty just shared provides a thorough overview of the extensive work done by our team to ensure that all Kyle voters were informed at the polls. Again, we were focused on education only, not advocacy. That said, we also wanted to share one final data point, which reflects our team's investment back to the city of Kyle. While the total cost to the city for our team's fees as part of this campaign was $65,000, roughly 400 hours of our team's time, Bowie and Company ultimately worked more than 1,000 hours over the last five months to support this initiative, providing a total value to the city of more than $200,000. Bowie and Company has led a number of public education campaigns and bond elections throughout central Texas, and each initiative comes with its own unique challenges. 2020, as you all know, has been a year like no other, but despite the circumstances with COVID, we were able to work with the team and the city to successfully inform residents about Proposition A. And ultimately see the bond pass last night as a result of your voters understanding the need. As we wrap up our presentation this evening, we want to ensure that we really have provided you with all of the information you need regarding Prop A. So with that, I will say thank you, and we'll turn it over for questions.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you, Ashley. Any questions for Bowie or staff?
I don't have a question, Mayor.
Any comments, feedback?
I don't have, this council member Rizzo, I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for your help, Patty and Team Bowie. Thank you for all that, for educating the public on the needs of our public safety center. I just, I just want to thank staff, the council, everyone involved in this project, citizens that also were involved to see this to fruition. From the start, we wanted this to be a decision to build a new public safety center for Kyle left up to the citizens, and I'm glad that we were able to bring this forward and a bond, and the citizens were able to vote on it. And it's been since 2013 since we've had a bond, and I was confident that citizens would see the need for a police department and that they would make the correct choice that was in their best interest. So I just want to thank everyone who voted, everyone who participated, and the task force as well, and all the support we had for this public safety center. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilor Rizzo. Anyone else?
Yes, this is Councilmember Bill Lobos, and definitely, I appreciate Bowie in receiving and understanding the message that we were, that we were putting out. I think it, it lends itself to the, to the idea that we did connect with our community and with the needs of the community. I think first and foremost, also, is that, you know, with this comes a large amount of responsibility. And although, you know, the bond did pass, the responsibility of our future as a, as a city and the responsible use of funds and taxpayer dollars is going to be of utmost importance, right? So I think my, my take on this is, is also is that along with, with this bond, some propositions passed. I think also the messaging got clear is that, yes, we support our law enforcement, and at the same time, we are asking for some more engagement, some more transparency, and some more, the ability to engage the community with data that they can understand and, and utilize to, to, to see what our department and our, and the people of our, our city are doing, particularly in the police department. So I believe that the message got across very clearly, that we do support law enforcement, and at the same time, there's a, there's a, there's a responsibility to engage the community appropriately and consistently, and to allow the constituents of, and all the people of Kyle to be a part of, of this building, be a part of this organization, and be a part of what they're doing in our community on a, on a regular basis. So thank you so much, Bowie, for all your hard work and, and sending that message out clearly, is that, great work, and very proud to be a part of this.
As are we. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bill Lobos. Any further comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Councilor Shill.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that now that the majority of the voters voted to have this public safety building constructed, I just want to impose on council, future councils, to make sure that it does keep the progress that we've started and see this building actually built and utilized for the police department and the city of Kyle. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shill. Completely concur with that and agree with that. I second everything that Councilmember Rizzo said, and I want to piggyback and highlight the great comments by Councilmember Bill Lobos. I think a lot was learned about our community these past few months, and particularly with the, the vote yesterday. And you can want both, and you can support your law enforcement community and then want greater engagement and collaboration. And I think that's what the citizens of Kyle clearly voiced in yesterday's election. So I look forward to continue the work that we've done and the progress we've made, and I concur with you, Councilmember Shill, to get the most out of what, what benefits our agency, but also benefits our citizenry and our city as a whole, because that's what this is about. I do want to take some time and thank staff, our communications department, Chief of Staff, Jerry Hendricks, Pirvez, our finance department, their, their other staff that were pertinent and part of this process as well. I want to thank them for their tireless work and effort on this. I want to thank our, our PD as well for collaborating with us. I think, you know, one thing that was lost, I think, but was an important, important point to make is this was a two-year progress, and while not, the entire two years was spent on coming up with the single-site option, it was two years spent of really looking at solving this problem once and for all, as our city has grown exponentially, and therefore the needs and services also grow with that. So I want to thank our PD for working with us over those two years to, to find this solution. I think a lot of praise and well-deserved praise should go to this council. I know typically try to use this platform to praise myself and my colleagues, but I think a lot of that goes to this council for having the, the vision and wherewithal and strength to try and solve this problem over two years and stop kicking the can down the road of something that was much needed in our community. And it was a difficult decision for this council. I was a part of every bit of it, and I commend my colleagues for standing strong and wanting to solve this problem. It's not easy, and certainly nothing I ever expected to, to address in, in the manner that we did, but to this is the direction that we were through the process here too, and it came to fruition. I definitely, last but not least, I'd like to thank our Bowie and Company team. I know it, it was a challenging three months, and certainly you all have done a number of these, and it was clear of your experience with that, but I'm sure you've never dealt with some folks like us here in the city of Kyle. And I thank you all for being flexible and, and with us and rolling with the punches and rolling with the changes, no matter how early or late in the game they were. It was all a team effort to try and inform the voters as much as possible. And I want to thank Ms. Kigley Whitehead for reiterating the point of the informational campaign. I know it was a struggle for a lot of folks and certainly something that this community has never engaged in or done before, an informational campaign on a, and a bond that was initiated by the city. It's definitely a challenge to be, to stay on that line of being informative and not advocacy. And I want to thank my colleagues, you know, Councilmember Bill Lobos, Councilmember Rizzo, the mayor, and really the, many of the other council members as well behind the scenes and, and working on the town halls and, and speaking in those, that, that definitely was something that was different as well and a challenge. So thank you, Bowie, for your, your tireless effort on this, and hopefully you've learned a lot about the city of Kyle and also what our resolve is and your personal, your team's great effort and resolve through challenges as well. So thank you all for that, and I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Ellison. Is there anyone else? All right. With that, we will move on. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you all again, Team Kyle.
All right, next, bye. Next up, agenda item number six, CIP Road Projects and Consent Agenda Presentation. Go ahead, Leon.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Leon Barba, City Engineer. This is our regular update on our projects. Lemon Road, last pay estimate we received, they're about 98% complete. They still have some items they're trying to wrap up. We did identify some ADA issues, and they're being repaired and being completed. We are planning to seal the bridge this week. I believe that's Thursdays when they're going to try to do that seal. It's a real simple, it's, it's no different than sealing a wooden deck. It's just, it's a clear material, takes a little bit to dry, but it's just a clear seater, so that, that's usually done about every five, seven years on the bridges if there's some superficial cracking or anything like that. So that's being done this week. Next one is Burleson. That one's about 93% complete based on last pay estimates. Again, this contractor's also worked on his punch list. He still has quite a few to, to wrap up, and we're also working on finalizing the quantities for this particular project. South Side wastewater improvements, we're at 69% complete. We have our one crew still working at the lift station. Second crew is there working by the prison at TDCJ. They're working on some wastewater lines and the reclaim water line that's there. They've completed the work that was by the public burst department. The crew that we have during the bores, they are now working on the north end of the project, trying to wrap up the last two bores for that particular project. On the treatment plant expansion, we're still reviewing the last pay application, so it's the same number that we had last time we presented, it's 14.4% complete. Four mercury bar and pipe is going on. There's installation of duct banks and manholes throughout the site. The schedule, it's still on schedule, still same project, time scale that we're looking at and trying to complete this project on time. I have a couple of pictures for you. This is the overall site. That was taken on October 30th. As you can see, it's, it's pretty expansive project. The next slide again is, you've seen, you saw this in last, it's the last session. I think they had quite a bit of the steel in, but when you look at this next picture, you'll see that it's, but I can't say it enough, but it's very impressive. I've done a lot of work around bridges, and I don't think I've ever seen anything like this, so it's a very substantial project. Arbutin Creek Interceptor, we've awarded the contract. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next week. We plan to start our project December 1st of this year. Well, slide number four, we had a pre-construction meeting today, and we were trying to start this project a little bit sooner than December 15th, but apparently the water usage is a little bit high because of the recent lack of rain that we've been getting, so we're going to postpone it to December 15th. Again, contractor was ready to start today, but we're going to have to postpone and wait until the water usage goes down so we can make sure we have enough water for our citizens. We will be bringing the Elliott Branch Wastewater Improvements Project to council at the next meeting. The estimated cost for this project was originally about 6.2 million. The bid came in at a little, a little over $4 million, so we feel we got a good price on this project, but we'll be bringing the project to you next council meeting. Old Post Road, we do have a meeting scheduled with Hayes County on November 18th to go over the project coordination. There's quite a few things that need to be, we need to talk about as we start moving the project forward. We're still working with text to get our permit, and we are still working with the owners to get the contract with them so we can trade that, do an exchange of right-of-way and straighten that road out at County Road 158. Hayes County is, is reviewing the draft local, inter-local agreement, and we have not heard back from them yet. I will check with them probably later this week and see where they are on it. This is the Seta Ranch Roundabout Project being done by the developer. The construction is supposed to have started today. I heard that they were putting signs up. I even got one call, the person was concerned that she couldn't figure out the detour route, so I tried to explain it to her. But I also asked inspectors to make sure we got all the signs up as fast as we could so we could get the notify, notify the public. We did do some public notice on this. As you can see- Uh, as you can see, there's the proposed uh detour route for this particular project. And uh, initially we were told two months for this project to be completed, but apparently they're saying they need about three months. And with the weather, it's possible it might take as long as three months, but uh, we'll keep encouraging them to speed it up. So we get the uh, traffic back to its normal route through that uh intersection. We do have one consent agenda item I wanted to bring up. Uh, Texas has asked us to pass the ordinance to reduce the speed limit on I thirty-five Northbound Frontage Road from fifty-five to forty-five. This is the section there that's uh, that where they're going to take out that low water crossing with those culverts and replace it with a bridge, so we wanted to see if they could get the speed limit lowered there. Since it's in the city limits, we had to pass an ordinance to do that. It is temporary. As soon as the construction is finished, it will go back to fifty-five. And that concludes my uh presentation. Any questions?
Leon, this is uh Councilman Tobias. All right, um, I'm already getting the the messages. Cassette Ranch Roundabout. Um, I know this started yesterday, but right now it is a major traffic issue. Um, lot of the traffic is cutting through the Kensington Trails uh subdivision, which is backing up all the way from BB. All the way around. I know they have to go around Dacey to go forth, but is there any way we can look at possibly during peak hours of traffic of getting uh, and maybe this has to be directed to uh, Chi Parte, getting some traffic flow out there? Cause the the lines are long and the concerns that I'm starting to hear about is emergency uh personnel that might need to get out to these areas. Cause the roads are just blocked. It's taken like forty-five minutes for some people to go all the way around.
Councilmember, we looked at a number of options. I do wanna go back to the beginning when when the intent was to build this roundabout. Initially, the developer wanted to close the intersection. And we said, we can't have that happen. We have to have a way to get through. People in the Button Creek Village, Button Creek Reserve, they really need to have a way to get out in the event of a rainstorm, a rain event that blocks those uh low water crossings on Button Lane, so they finally agreed to provide a bypass there. It's a two-way bypass, so that allows you to come in and out. Uh, the, if you, and I measured the distance, extra distance that you have to go to get from uh Dacey and Button back to that intersection at uh Go Forth and Button. It's an additional two and a half miles and yes, it does take time. But uh, we couldn't take the road. We, we looked to try to get the road back into the subdivision, but that's on private property. It's still their property. We, there would have been had, been quite a bit of road work done just to be able to do that. We looked on the north side on the short property and that's just all farmland and you'd have to build a a a road there in essence, paving and bait and asphalt just to get them, uh, just to get any kind of bypass. So the best, this is, has been the best solution that we could come up with on this particular intersection. There was another way to build this and that was to build it half at a time. And we, we talked to the developer about that. He said, well, that's just gonna double the time to build the the uh, the roundabout. Plus it's rather, it's better if you try to build it all at one, one construction sequence rather than trying to build half of it at a time, so. Uh, rather than take four to six months to get this thing opened, we, we said, let's just get it, uh, let's close it down as best as we can, keep it open as best as we can. Get in there and and get this thing built and get out of here, so we can get this going again.
So it was estimated for two months. Now it got bumped up an extra month?
Yes, sir.
Three?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yeah, initially I was told two months, but this was back in uh, the summer when they were thinking about doing this. And we had, obviously didn't have a lot of rain events coming in at that time. I, when we talked about moving this into October, I said, well, if you try to do it two months in October, typically October is your last month. Now this year it just didn't rain, which is, you know, it's, it just didn't rain, so that's a good thing if we had started in October. But now we're into November, uh, we've got the holidays, uh, so if we, we're gonna, like I said, we're gonna continue pushing on the contractor to get this open as quickly as possible. If everything goes well, they could get it done in two months, but if there are delays, it it will drag on to probably three months.
Mayor and Council, I I did uh ask Harper if he could jump in also as part of this report and talk about the heavy pieces of equipment that are on the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, Harper Wilder, Public Works Director. Uh, real quick, I just wanted to advise y'all, um, this is just a follow-up to the la- the last council meeting uh, where I said that we would have some uh, street construction heavy equipment on the agenda. There's three items on there. One's gonna be a milling machine. And uh, the second one will be a pad foot roller. And the third one will be a steel wheel roller. Um, all three of these are necessary items pertaining to the street construction crew. We did have actually two more, um, but my street division manager, Scott Egbert, um, had some discrepancies with the, with the quotes that were given, and so we did not bring those uh before you. Should have them on the next one. I'm, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Harper. Does anybody have any more questions for Harper or Leon?
I do. Um, Leon, the uh ordinance for the traffic, um, the decrease in the traffic speed on uh Northbound I thirty-five. So that's just an ordinance. We are not providing any equipment or any money is going towards this, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause I didn't want Texas to make us be spending money on their their project. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I I can add a little bit to that also because they are uh, removing some landscaping as part of that project. They have added uh a landscape, they've added a cow to their landscaping plan for the next fiscal year. So we should be seeing additional trees along that corridor.
Oh, trees, okay, not just wildflower seed?
Right, right, some actual trees.
Thank you, Tracy. Any other questions or comments? All right, uh, next up, well, let's move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve items number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Shiel, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos, so we approved the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilperson Ellison?
Ye- yes, thank you. And if uh, it would be all right with the council and we can certainly uh move it later to the agenda. But I had uh some questions about agenda item seventeen and I might need uh to request that we go into the executive session to inquire with the attorney on um, the legalities of that.
That, that would be out of seven, seven, correct, Councilmember Ellison? Seven, not seventeen?
Seven. Uh, all right, you, uh, Tracy, do you wanna amend your motion to exclude?
I will amend my motion to approve items number eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Second.
Okay, so the motion by Councilwoman Shiel is to approve the consent agenda items number eight through seventeen, seconded by Councilmember Villalobos. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes. I would like to hear about item number eleven.
Okay, then I will amend once again.
No, it's, it it's okay. We can just get the, we can get the presentation right now, so.
Okay.
Uh, you, you wanna hear from Jennifer? Mayor Protim?
If she, if she's the one that's, her name's on the the item, whoever can speak to it.
Okay, did you have a specific question?
What is it?
Okay, so this is going to be a engaging Swaget productions for our video um, services. Rather than using Nova's agenda like we have been using for the last couple of years. It's a much more upgraded system. Um, City of Austin uses it, City of Dallas. It's a, it's, it's a much more user-friendly and um, includes services such as searchability for audio.
Okay.
Uh, Jennifer, is there, what, what's the cost difference?
There's some one-time fees um, for equipment purchases. And then the service is incrementally a little bit more than what we're paying for Nova's agenda. Uh, we've had a lot of issues with Nova's agenda over the last couple of years. Um, things where videos got swapped with other entities that are their other clients. And the only way that we even found out about it was that I noticed it and contacted them. And um, the only way we were able to get our video back in place is because we had a local copy saved by our IT department. Um, that's just one example of the many issues that we've had with Nova's agenda over the last couple of years. Um, and so we've been looking to upgrade that for some time.
Okay, and um, this is strictly to put on the website and video, like video there. It has nothing to do with video that we can upload to Channel Ten.
It's, um, we, it, this'll be basically the exact same thing that we have with Nova's agenda, that we do have it on Channel Ten. Um, it, it's, it's basically a replacement of what we have right now.
So will that also improve the sound on Channel Ten and um, the actual um, picture itself? Cause I know that we, on Channel Ten, we had issues with the picture being cut, cropped off uh on the, the TV and then having to crank up the TV to, you know, a hundred to hear.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure about what the, what's causing those issues to be able to say whether this would um, improve that or not. Um, but we have been, it's me, Samantha, and Matt have all been working with Swaget on getting this new service rolled out.
Okay, all right, thank you. And thank you, um, uh, Mayor Protim Coach for us starting that dialogue.
Absolutely. I, I concur and I know um, you know, when we sto- started with Nova's agenda, it certainly was something that was leading edge for us at the time. And something that e- advanced us a- as well. Uh, I have heard about uh various times over the years, uh, the pain points with Nova's agenda. And um, I think that, you know, there, as, as Councilmember Shil uh mentioned, there has been some issues and different things and volume and particularly um, late at night with meetings and different things. So if there's some potential to clean some of that up as well as uh, ease some of those pain points that staff has been having. Uh, because at the end of the day, this is a big part of our communication with our citizenry. And as much as we can be leading edge and innovative and ahead of the game on that and 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 um, I think that sh- shined a bright light this year in how beneficial that was to be uh innovative and leading edge on that, um, I can be in support of that. Um, so I, I would like to make a motion that we approve this agenda item as written.
We, we already have a motion on the floor, so it's it's already, it's, we're, we're discussing agenda item numbers eight through seventeen right now. Is there any, uh, Mayor Protim, do you have anything else you wanna add or any other comments?
No.
This is Councilmember Rizzo. Sorry, Jennifer, how user, user-friendly is it? The program?
So, I've gone to the City of Austin's uh webpage and looked at their council meetings and everything. Um, it's, it's very easy to use and everything like that. I'm not sure if the City of Austin has a service that we're looking to implement, which is where if you say a word, you can search that word and so you can actually find in the video where a certain topic was discussed based on the audio. Right now, um, we're having to use our minutes to be able to find where um, something was discussed or something like that. This'll have searchability on the audio itself, so that's a really huge plus. That's, it's even to the public. Um, the public side could search a keyword and it'll ping where that's located. I think from a staff perspective, it's, they do the indexing themselves. So like right now during this council meeting, I'm indexing the video as we discuss these items so that later you can go and jump to that particular item if you wanted to listen to it. Um, that's a service that Swaget does for us, so um, that, that'll be a relief to me.
Great, that's awesome. I'm, I'm glad that's uh user-friendly for the public. We do have a, an older uh part of our uh community that, you know, sometimes gets a little frustrated with the technology. So anything that we can do to make it more u- uh user-friendly for the public, I'm all for. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you, Jennifer.
When do you anticipate to start using this new Swaget system?
Currently, um, we, this contract is going to be this, the kickoff for that. And then we'll be receiving equipment, um, and we'll start receiving training on using the system. I don't have a start date. Um, before they move forward with any of it, we needed to approve, have the contract approved.
This is uh, Councilmember Villalobos and, and using Swaget here, we transitioned to the county. It's been very user-friendly in that you can take pieces of the meeting um, and send them out and utilize those on social media. It's very user-friendly. It's very easy to communicate certain pieces, so if you do a search and pull out the discussion on a, on a specific item, you can send that bite out. And so that's, it's uh, it's been a, it's been a lot easier to use than, than some of the other competitors, uh, but it's also been very good. Very, for, for me, which is very important, is to communicate to the, to the community. When they have a question about something, I can just take that bite and just send it to them a- as a specific uh piece and then have a conversation about it, so it's been good. I've been impressed by it.
All right, uh, any final comments? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Is there any objection to item number seventeen? The reduction of the speed limit on I thirty-five Frontage Road being finally passed? All right, seeing none, uh, the item is now finally passed. Councilperson Ellison, you wanna wait on item number seven until the end of the meeting? Okay, all right, next up, agenda item number eighteen. Consider impossible action to approve an interlocal agreement for operations and maintenance of the combined emergency communications center. Mr. Sellers.
Uh, God, uh, Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this one.
Thank you, Councilperson Villalobos.
All right, Mayor Council, Scott Sellers for the record. I'm just gonna say that, uh, Councilmember Villalobos has her kids. Okay, there we go. I was just waiting for that to, to come off. Uh, this item is a, uh, basically the same item that was brought forward that council did approve a couple of months ago. However, uh, since approval, Texas State University Police Department has decided to join the co-located dispatch center. So uh, they haven't been negotiating with Hayes County. And what you see is a revised agreement uh with some parameters uh to include the Texas State PD. Uh, one of those is a reduced term in the agreement. It was a, a much longer term before. Now it's a five-year term. Uh, as well as a, a twelve-month termination provision, uh, and some other appropriations type clauses. Uh, really, those are the, the key changes. I think this is a, a great move for, for the university. I think this is a great move for, for the university, a great move for all of us who are part of co-location. And we, we again recommend approval to the council of this agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Mr. Sellers?
Yes. So adding Texas State, does that decrease any of our amount in the total bill or not?
No, ma'am. Fortunately, they are covering their costs.
Okay, well, I was hoping.
It's a good question.
Any other questions, comments? I'm pretty excited about Texas State coming on board. I think it demonstrates the, the legs that this program has and gives us an opportunity to bring more first responder agencies together, which as far as I can tell, can only improve the service because the service is designed to work best when these jurisdictions and entities collaborate in this way. So to, I'm very thankful for Texas State and their participation in this program and, and look forward to seeing the day when all of the first responding and dispatched the center-based entities come together in the county for that so that we can have a true regional combined co-location. So very, very good news. Thank you, Scott, for your work on this. Any other comments? I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 18.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Shields. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Wait just for a second while we get Councilmember Vialobos back. All right, I'm going to go ahead and bring up next agenda item number 19. First reading, an ordinance of the City of Kyle, Texas, amending the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances, meaning Article 2, Water and Wastewater Systems, and Section 50-30, authorize the imposition of water and wastewater utility liens, establishing procedures for the release of utility liens and providing for related matters. Ms. Sines.
Mayor and council, page signs for the record. This ordinance amends the city's code of ordinances to add a provision that allows the city to impose liens for delinquent utility bills. State law, these are water and wastewater bills. The state law allows cities to enforce requirements to pay for water and wastewater utilities through imposition of a lien. And so this ordinance adopts the sections of the state law that are required in order for the city to enforce payment of water and wastewater bills in that way. There are some exceptions noted in state law, and those are noted in the, the ordinance as well. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Page, this is Councilmember Rizzo. So this would be across the board. This would be commercial, residential, everyone who receives water, wastewater from the City of Kyle, correct?
Yes, sir.
My, my question is, is there a way we could do a dollar amount? I, I'd hate for people to start getting, you know, letters saying that we're going to impose a lien on their property when they owe maybe a couple hundred dollars or, or maybe even up to four or $500. You know, a low amount. I wanted to make sure that we are not just trying to put a lien on someone just to put a lien on them. I'm making sure that we know that we're going through some difficult times right now with COVID-19 and that we're always there for the residents is kind of what I'm leaning at.
So let me clarify one question, one answer that I gave before that's also going to respond to what you asked. There is an exception for homesteaded properties. A lien can't be filed against properties that have the homestead exemption. So that takes out one set of customers that wouldn't be able to have a lien filed on the property. And this is because of limitations under state law for filing liens on, on, on homesteads because of Texas wanting to protect homesteads. In addition, there are some limitations on filing liens on tenant property. If a bill is connected in a tenant's name after notice that the property is a rental property, there's some limitations on filing a lien in that case. So the statute already provides some protections for people that may be very, most severely impacted by COVID. In addition to that, the lien isn't automatic. The city has to go through some steps to, to file the lien. So there's, there's discretion within the staff to, how to enforce and to do so on an equitable basis. The city council, if it wants to make it more formal, can put something in the ordinance to address it. Or you can allow staff to adopt policy, internal practices and policies for enforcement of this ordinance.
I think I'd be more comfortable in going that route, looking for a policy. So that way we give direction, we're not just leaving it up to staff. I'd like to see something that we put in place that, oh, I'm not looking at, you know, not telling people they're responsible for the other bills, but I do know that there's circumstances sometimes. Sometimes it's people's health that plays a key part of it. And sometimes I know it's, could be a pandemic now. So an eye-opener for us. I just want to make sure that we have something in place that will help those that can't help themselves. Because you just never know, you, you can be working one day and next day you could get sick and, and, you know, you're on a road to recovery, six months, seven months, you know. So I just want to make sure we have something in place.
Well, if, if council wants to give direction to set an amount during this reading or give direction to staff to come back with recommendations for second reading, that's another option.
I'm good with a second reading. Give, for staff to come back with recommendations.
For a policy? For a policy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So to, to clarify, Councilwoman Rizzo, you said that you're good to try to bring something back for second reading?
I'd like staff to bring something back, some recommendations, some type of policies we could implement to make sure that we're looking out for those that sometimes, you know, can't look out for themselves due to illness or, you know, something beyond our control. You know, just, you know, COVID. I know we're helping out, the city's doing their part. But, you know, what would have happened in, in a short timeframe, that two months we would have had, been seeing liens out for just a two-month period? I want to make sure we have limitations on how long we let someone go, how long before we implement the lien. I don't want, you know, I, I hate to see someone, you know, have one or two months, bad months, and then all of a sudden we're putting a lien on them and, and adding to it. I can understand when it's a little bit longer. I'm, I'm just making sure that we're not doing it after one or two months, you know.
Do you think that's a question for Page? Or maybe is that something more internal to Utility Billing Department, Billing Department from a policy standpoint? Pervez might want to weigh in on that.
Mayor and council, for the record, this is Pervez Mahi, City's Director of Finance. If council wishes, we, staff can, can draft an internal administrative policy, how we would administer this ordinance, the requirements of this ordinance, and bring back to council before we even implement the ordinance. Or if council wishes, we can bring back with the second reading and incorporate within this ordinance what policy we would be following for lien placements.
I definitely would like to see that policy pre-hand.
Yeah, I'd like to see the policy as well. I don't think we need to incorporate it into the ordinance just because if things change, you know, three years down the road or four, you know, years down the road. And, you know, instead of having to change the ordinance, it's a lot easier to change an internal policy than it is to change an ordinance. So I don't think we need it inside the ordinance, but just to have the internal policy. But I would like to see, would like for council to be able to see the policy prior to, or, yeah, a second reading.
We, we will bring back a policy for council's review along with the second reading of this ordinance.
Thank you, Pervez. Appreciate it.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 19 as written and give staff direction to bring back a policy consistent with the discussion that we have had today to be considered at second reading.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion? Pervez, I think it would be nice, if at all possible, for us to get that emailed out, you know, the, the week ahead of time or by agenda setting, if at all possible, before the next meeting so that we can have a chance to kind of process it before we're here processing it live.
We'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Any, anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. We'll bring it back for second reading along with the policy next, at the next meeting. Next up, agenda item number 20. This was postponed at the last meeting. Consider approval of Braun Homes, Casseta Ranch, Rottaway License Agreement. Mr. Koontz.
Sorry, I was muted. So for the record, my name is Howard Koontz. And what I'm going to do is actually pass this off to Page because I think she has done most of the heavy lifting with this agreement. So I'd, I'd rather she explain it to you than myself.
Okay. I'm back. Mayor and council, page signs, city attorney for the record. Again, this item, I had assistance with Mr. Ullman in our office working on this item. This is connected to the Casseta Ranch Development and Development Agreement. And whenever, and, and a developer is going to install any improvements in public right-of-way, they, we've got a development agreement that allows them to do so. But they also have to get a license agreement approved. And that license agreement recognizes that they've got to carry insurance and name the city as an additional insured and, and indemnify the city in case there's any kind of damage or claims that arise related to their improvements being in the right-of-way. It also recognizes that your, you, the city has control over the right-of-way and you may need to cause those improvements to be removed because you need to use the right-of-way. And you've got the absolute right to do, do that. And so that's the purpose of the, of the agreement. There's a license agreement between the City of Kyle and the developer. It is for the construction, installation, maintenance of landscaping improvements, which include shrubs, trees, irrigation, and grass located in the right-of-way of, within the subdivision and the rights-of-way for Go-Go Fourth and Button Lane. It appears that in addition to this item, there's an assignment, assignment and assumption of license agreement. It's, looks like it's an assignment of the agreement to the, the HOA. And that, that typically occurs with these, the developer takes on the obligation initially. And then the HOA, in this case, it's, it's Casseta Ranch Residential Community, Inc., takes on the obligation because they assess dues and for maintenance of the improvements in the right-of-way. And I can answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, Page. Any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 20 as stated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you for all your heavy lifting on that, Page. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I will say thanks to Jeff Ullman, who did, did all the work. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, next up, agenda item number 21. A resolution of the City of Kyle, Texas, accepting the petition for annexation of 120.41 acres, more or less, of land located in Hayes County, Texas, setting the schedule, providing for open meetings and other related matters. Mr. Koontz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, my name is Howard Koontz. I'm the Community Development Director for the record. This is a property that is currently a non-annexation DA property. And they had plans to make some development on the property with the City of Kyle. And the terms of that non-annexation DA read that at the time that they wish to make improvements, they will voluntarily annex into the city. And that's what this is. This is the request from the persons responsible for the property that are making formal requests to annex their property into the City of Kyle. And we are following the state process of having this read at a public meeting for the purpose of annexation. I can make myself available for any questions you might have.
It's just refreshing to actually have somebody want to annex into the city. I know it was under development agreement, but still.
Thank you, Howard. Thank you, Tracy. Any, any questions, comments? Motions?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the annexation. Item number.
All right, it's been, it's been moved by Councilwoman Rizzo, seconded by Councilwoman Ellison, that we approve agenda item number 21 regarding annexation. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number 22. Award a professional services contract to Coleman and Associates for the landscape design of Mary Kyle Hartson Park and 104 South Burlison in an amount not to exceed $93,700. Mr. Earp.
Mayor and council, for the record, this is James Earp, Assistant City Manager. I was experimenting with turning my camera on, but we are driving somewhere between Bassdrop and College Station right now. And Howard accurately portrayed the fact that it looked like I was on the Blair Witch Project, you know, filming. So we're going to leave the camera off unless I just want to be entertained. The item before you tonight is a professional services agreement with Coleman and Associates. The scope of the project is to plan the, the complete redesign and construction management portion of the downtown Square Park, the Mary Kyle Hartson Park, along with the landscaping that would go along with the building design and construction at 104 South Burlison. Since we had to rebid out the 104 South Burlison RFQ process for the design-build, we were very satisfied with the work that Coleman and Associates have put into their conceptual designs for what they envisioned for the hardscapes and the new plantings and walkways and playscapes and those things. We, we decided that to go ahead and exercise the professional services contract and just award that work to Coleman and Associates. So we didn't see a need to go back through another RFQ process. So their contract's before you. The dollar amount for their fees includes all of their design work as well as their construction phase, construction management phase work. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Comments?
Mayor? I am so glad to see this because I think it is very important that we make our city square park. our city square park our gold standard for our downtown area and our, and our park system. This is, this park is one of the history, is part of our history of Kyle, and it will also help increase the foot traffic for the downtown corridor to help also increase the businesses in the downtown corridor. So I am very happy to see this, and I look forward to a beautiful meeting place for our citizens to be able to, you know, meet up with each other, sit and enjoy the weather, and even eat some food that they may have bought at one of the restaurants around the park. So I am very much in favor of this, and thank you for bringing it forward, James.
Thank you. Tracy, anyone else?
Yes, Mayor. Well said, Councilmember Roshel. I know you've been an adamant and consistent supporter of our downtown area in your district. And I think, I concur with everything you said, and I think this would be a great addition to downtown corridor and area that we don't want to ever forget and continue to improve on. I think that the selection of this particular professional service, Coleman and Associates, is more than capable. I have seen some of their work that they've done around the state, anywhere from doing all the landscaping outside of Kyle Field down in College Station to a lot of work in the central Texas area, the landscaping and green roof there at the new Austin Library in downtown. So they are more than capable and a great resume that we, of work that Coleman and Associates have done. So I'm very confident in this professional service provider, and I look forward to seeing their work here in Kyle.
Thank you, Councilperson Ellison. What else?
This is Councilmember Rizzo.
And Mayor, this is Alex Yalobos. I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Go ahead, Alex.
Just to echo those comments from Councilmember Roshel, I think, I think we've hit those things spot on. It's the history, it's the, it's what, it's another cornerstone for the community as we continue to just redevelop it and really beautify it and make it even more beautiful with all the attraction of the landscape that is coming forward. So this is a, I'm excited about this. I'm glad that we're starting here. I think that it will, when it's done, will inspire other developments in the downtown area. So I'm very proud to be a part of this. Thank you.
Mayor, it's Councilmember Rizzo. I just want to say that I'm really looking forward to seeing our downtown park with amazing landscaping in front of it. When I was a kid growing up here, riding my bike in front of it, you know, I always thought it was a great part of Kyle, but I always knew there was a little bit missing. And I travel now, I drive a lot through different states now as an adult, and I see towns smaller than ours that have amazing small courthouses with beautiful landscaping around it. And I sit there and say, we can do a little bit better. And I'm glad that we're moving forward on this, and I look forward to seeing families out there enjoying shade, enjoying the beautiful landscape out there, and being a meeting place for the residents of Kyle. It's a long time coming, and I'm glad we're finally getting there. Thank you. All council and everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo. I would actually want to add to what's already been stated as well, and just to, for any, anyone in the community who's listening to us discuss this, I certainly don't think it's the council's intent, certainly not my intent, to say that the downtown area is languishing from the standpoint of walkability. Our square is beautiful as it is, and it's been, you know, we've recently trimmed the trees. We've installed a, you know, a few years ago, a nice fountain. Now Burlison Street coming in with major road improvements and urban streetscapes. Those are all very important components. This, this project that we've been undertaking now for several months is designed to amplify and build upon the historic nature of the square and the beauty within. So I'm very excited to see Ms. Coleman get to work on the design of the landscaping. I know she's very well-regarded and has a, has a resume that speaks for itself in terms of the projects she's worked on before. We know that there's going to be considerations with the historical commission that we're going to need to make sure that we're working with them and not disturbing the historical nature of the square. I know that's going to be Ann's commitment, as well as this council. But at the same time, bringing it forward in such a way that the, the square can be used by more people and can be even more beautiful than it is now. And as it has been said by the other council members, you know, the facility, the building that we're trying to construct, which is a big part of this project that we're working on, is, is designed to help foster commercial pedestrian traffic in our square so that over time, more and more economic prosperity can be seen in and around specifically the square, which is something that, even though this council has had a hard time figuring out the path forward for the greater downtown area, something we've all been in agreement on is that the square itself is an area that we want to see become more lively and get more investment and have more quality-of-life businesses there and boutique retail and restaurants. And I think this is the right step in that direction. So with that, I don't really have anything else to add except to say that I'm excited to cast this vote, and I'm excited, I'm excited to continue trying to elevate our downtown area the way I know that the folks who live there, as well as the greater Kyle community and of course, the downtown business owners all desire.
I echo everything the council said. I'm looking forward to this project. I just wanted to say thank you, James, for all the hard work. I know you've put a lot of time and effort into this, and it hasn't been easy. So just thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, James, and Paige.
And Paige.
Mayor.
Anything else?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Roshel, seconded by Councilmember Ellison, that we approve agenda item number twenty-two. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number twenty-three. This item is also postponed at the last meeting, second reading and ordinance submitting chapter fifty-three of the City of Coll, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately one hundred and twenty-eight point five eight acres of land from agriculture, single-family residential, R one three, approximately thirty acres of land from, to residential townhomes, R one T, and approximately twenty point three seven acres of land to community commercial for the property located off of East Post Road, just north of Quill Ridge subdivision. This item is postponed. I know we're still working through some issues. Mr. Coons, go ahead.
Yes.
Do you have anything to add?
Again, Howard Coons for the record, and it's my understanding, and the city manager will back me up, that this item is still undergoing discussions behind the scenes. And I believe that the request on their part was to postpone this to a date certain, which would be the next voting meeting on November, Tuesday, November the seventeenth.
Mr. Sellers, you concur?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until the next regularly scheduled council meeting, which should be held on November seventeenth.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a request that any material that we need for this vote at the next meeting not come any later than when the agenda is first posted, so that we have time to review the material.
Will do. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, city manager's report.
Okay, Mayor and council, Scott Sellers for the record again. Sharing my screen now. All right, several items on the city manager's report. First, we did declare a stage-two drought as of October twenty-second. You'll see here on the slide some of the rules for irrigating during that time. And this is something we typically do each year. This year, it's even more important as we're making changes to our well foresight. So this, this will help us balance out our water situation through the city during the construction period. We had a great spooktacular cruise event hosted by our Parks and Rec Department. We had eighteen vendors participate. The goal was to give the Coll community an opportunity to come together and get into the Halloween spirit. We had five hundred-plus vehicles that attended. If you happened to be one of those, which I passed through, it was quite the wild spectacle. There were so many vehicles and such a great, great event. I really think this brought the community out. We're already making plans to make it a better event for next year, but I want to thank again PARD and everyone who participated. We have a couple more mass food distribution events coming forward at Lehman High School, November fourteenth and December twelfth. From eight to eleven, volunteers are needed. I know our last distribution event was, was very well-attended. We had a lot of volunteers as well, so want to thank the community for that. Again, it's, it's open to all, no registration required, and our partnership with the Central Texas Food Bank is very strong. I didn't know if council wanted to have any feedback on this item before I move forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank the council members that participated. Councilwoman Vialobos and Tobias were stepping up. Unfortunately, had an emergency happen and wasn't able to attend. So thank y'all, because if you know me, I'm a hands-on guy, and when I'm not there, I feel like things don't run right. But you gave me the guarantee that everything was going good. So thank you. You made me feel better. But I want to thank everybody that came out and participated. I want to thank Jeff Gonzalez with the Central Texas Food Bank as well for all his work and collaboration. When this first, when we first started these, Jeff reached out to me and we were able to collaborate with the city, with different entities, and get these, this much-needed relief to the citizens of Kyle. And I just want to thank everyone that's been involved with this staff. I know Jerry's worked hard on this as well, Scott, everyone, Jennifer, Samantha for communications, getting the word out. I could go on and on, because this is a team effort totally. And I, this wouldn't happen unless there was a great team behind it, and I just want to thank everyone. Thank you very much. And eleven, over eleven hundred families.
This council member, Tobias. I think we got the final count of eleven hundred and ten families that day. And by talking to the coordinator that day, Lehman was a pretty good distribution site. They said it ran by pretty smooth. So just again, like Alfred Rees was saying, thank you, everybody, for pushing this through. And we're excited for the next two. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Vialobos. I can't say enough about this event. And I think the one impression that comes to mind for every single one that I've worked has been that we always see our community members, they recognize us, they appreciate what we're doing. And sometimes it can get emotional when you see them in their eyes and knowing that they really need this, this lift. So it's, I can't say enough about these events and look forward to continuing to be a part of these for, you know, as long as we need them. It's, 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 it's such an uplifting feeling to be out there and to have some of them recognize who you are and know that you're doing, you're doing God's work. And, and they appreciate it.
Great. And finally, we do have a couple of upcoming meetings and a holiday to talk about. Our November tenth TERs board meeting, that is at seven PM. So we've talked about it in the past, want to make sure it's still on your calendars, November tenth.
And is that completely virtual, or is that hybrid?
That is a virtual meeting. Great question. November eleventh is a city holiday. City Hall and other services that typically close for city holidays will be closed. And then finally, November seventeenth, we, we had looked at that becoming the canvas for our election. So this special council meeting was to talk about the canvas. Now, this is a little larger conversation, because we do need to talk about the date. Today, we, we looked at the City of San Marcos with their runoff election. They had initially targeted with correspondence from Hayes County, they had initially targeted the first of December. We have learned this evening that they have changed that date to the eighth of December for their runoff. That's, I believe that's a Tuesday, the eighth. And Hayes County has indicated that they would like us, if at all possible, to coordinate those runoff dates with the City of San Marcos. I don't think it's, it's absolutely necessity to do so, but that is their request for Tuesday, the eighth. If that is the case, that we target that date, then it does give us a little bit more of a window for the canvas. And I know Jennifer and Paige were looking at those dates, and this is really more of a larger conversation to determine that date first. And then we can kind of back into the, the date for canvassing the, the early voting date and then the locations as well. So with that, I'm going to open the floor to council to discuss the special meeting for, for the runoff election, and then we'll, we'll hit the canvas.
Scott, I think I need to recuse myself for this one.
Councilwoman Roshel, I don't think that's necessary. I don't think you, you need to recuse on this. But if Paige wants to weigh in.
It's not necessary.
Okay, thank you.
It looks to me like San Marcos has said that they're going to be trying to call the election on the sixteenth, which is the, the day before the special meeting, which I think would give the twenty-day window that they're saying that we will need, is the sixteenth a day that we can do the special canvassing meeting? And just as a reminder, only two council members have to be there to canvass. It's two votes, one to canvass the election and two to call for the runoff, but it does not require quorum. So we could probably do it during the day. And normally canvassing and calling the election happens kind of in the morning times, but it's really just whenever we can coordinate. But obviously, with the tight window, certainly not my desire to, to extend another week of campaigning. But I understand that we have to follow state law here, and I think we just weren't able, we're not going to be able to get it by the first. My personal preference would be to coordinate with San Marcos, because I think that is, allows for a better communication in the region about when the runoff is. It's already going to be hard enough to get our community's heads wrapped around the idea of coming back out to vote after what we all just collectively went through. So my thoughts would be canvas on the sixteenth and then have our meeting on the seventeenth regularly, but keep those separate. Paige, do you want to weigh in on that?
Just for informational purposes, the runoff election, there's a range. You can, you can hold the runoff election between the twentieth and the forty-fifth day after the election. So that gives you some flexibility on, the eighth is well within twenty to forty-five days of can, the canvas period is, I think, between the sixth and the seventeenth. I understand you may not have election results until the tenth, the official. So if you call some, any time between the tenth and the seventeenth, if you canvass the election at any time between those days. the 10th and the 17th, if you canvass the election at any time between those dates, you can hold a runoff election on the 8th. Yeah. I don't know if that was helpful or unhelpful.
So we just need to give Scott some feedback as to the date where at least a few of us can commit to be there.
Yeah. And I think you need to have a quorum to call the runoff. You can have less than a quorum to canvas, but I think you've got to have a quorum to call the runoff election.
So I concur with the comments of the cohesiveness and getting on the same page for communication purposes with the rest of the county and cities in our area for an election on the 8th. I could be available on the 16th at any time that day as well.
Another option might be if it's true that we're going to have the county's official numbers on the 10th, that we, you know, the council will be meeting on the 17th as a part of the TERS board. So if the TERS board meeting starts at 7:00, we could schedule a 6:45 meeting and go that route as well, so that we don't have to do anything special. But that's assuming that we can call it on the 10th.
Right. That makes sense to me. Since I don't have to recuse myself, I can say that. But yes, meeting before the TERS board on the 11th.
10th.
10th.
Tuesday, the 10th.
Tuesday. Okay, I'm losing my mind. So yes, Tuesday, the 10th, as long as we have the official numbers that day.
And there's a guarantee we'll have those numbers by the 10th? Scott?
That the county is set by the 10th, and I believe by close of business on the 10th, so we should be set.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Yeah, and worst-case scenario is that they don't, in which case we'll just reschedule it 13 through 16.
And I'll be available on the 16th if we need it. I think we'll have the council members need it.
Let's plan the fallback date. The fallback date would be the 16th to canvas and call the election. The primary goal and desire would be to do both of those items just prior to the TERS board meeting on the 10th. Sound good, Scott?
Yes, sir. That sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Scott, I just want to make a statement. First of all, I want to thank all my fellow council members for being wonderful people to work with over the past three years. It has been a joy to serve the City of Kyle. And I do appreciate all of you. Scott, thank you for all of you. This is not my end of service for the City of Kyle. I will be here to do anything anybody needs of me. Kathy, I know you're out there. You have me for the Great River Cleanup. Sarah, you know you've got me for both the Spring Festival and Pie in the Sky. You know, we can't leave Susan and Josh on their own. Also, to Yvonne, you'll be working with a great group of people. Please work with them and understand that they are just as passionate about the city as you are, and they want what's best for the city, and please work with them. That is the best way to make this city a better overall place to live, work, and just have fun in. And then to the residents of Kyle. Again, kind of keeping with the theme, that to make Kyle the best place to live, work, play, is for everybody to come together. And not east versus west, not originals versus the implants, and not downtown versus uptown, but everybody's here for the City of Kyle. And that's the only way this city will be the best possible city that it can be. So with that, I just want to say once again, thank you.
Tracy, as a resident of District 2, I want to thank you for being my council member. I want to thank you for all the work, all the time commitment that you gave to our district and to the city. Thank you for your sacrifices. Serving the community is never an easy job. There's a lot of hard work. There's a lot of commitment. There's a lot of time that comes into preparation for meetings and meeting with constituents. Thank you for the last three years. Thank you for your service. May God bless you.
Thank you.
Tracy, it's been, this is Councilmember Vialobos, and it's been an honor to work with you. Thank you for keeping us on task when it was necessary. And that's been many times, just keeping us directed and centered, not only out here on the dais, but in our executive meetings as well. You are correct. It's the theme of working together is how we can accomplish things, accomplish great things. And our legacy together is going to affect many people for many, many years to come. As you know, you know, we're both in this same thing together, and that, you know, I, my position of leaving to try to accomplish other things as well, and it has been an honor to work with everybody here on the dais. It has been such a heartfelt opportunity to give of myself and to learn from many different people that I've come in contact with. And I know that in some of the things that we've accomplished, we accomplished with that goal in mind is to make it better than when we found it. And I appreciate the staff and the council for being here lockstep and creating these opportunities for a lot of different people, but then also creating the opportunities for me to meet all of you and the staff members and many of the citizens that have been here and continue to move into Kyle. It's one of the best cities in the nation, and I'm just happy that I worked with you to have a small part in what it is today. Thank you.
And thank you, Alex.
Tracy, it's hard to know what to say after that. Hard to know how to keep moving on. I don't really know how to imagine this council without you. You've been such a strong, steady, caring, passionate, compassionate presence on this council. The, you know, I'm going to miss you. And I may be out there with you, volunteering here before too long, but the reality is, you and I both, we've talked about it so many times, that, you know, we don't know what the future holds. We only know the opportunities to have in front of us, and when given the opportunity to serve, you have ceased that calling. You have devoted yourself to the City of Kyle, not only for the last three years, but longer, and I anticipate into the future as well. And so, thank you for your service. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you for you.
Thank you for everything you've done for the City of Kyle. You cared for your district. You advocated for your district. You spoke up for your district, year after year, month after month, meeting after meeting. When things were moving and shaking and decisions were being made, there was no doubt in my mind that you filtered everything through not only what is in the best interest of the City of Kyle, but how it would affect your district and how can you make your district better throughout the decisions that we've been making in the course of these three years. And so, as far as I'm concerned, the residents of District 2, you know, are indebted to you in a way that I don't know that they'll ever be able to fully understand or repay. But I understand it, and this council understands who you are, what you've done for the city, how you've. It's just been just a steady, steady and compassionate and kind voice and person. You are everything that elected officials are known for. You are the opposite of that. You are the most genuine, caring, and honest person that I know, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for being you. And I look forward to next week, next year.
Most definitely.
Be okay.
All right.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else have any comments before we move on, or reset the last one? Scott?
All at seven to executive.
Thank you, Tracy and Alex. Really, from staff, it's been an honor to work with both of you. Mayor, we do have two additional items for executive session, as well as the item number seven. That was moved from consent.
Okay, we'll go there. Actually, we need a couple things on Tracy's comments, but as far as scheduling is concerned, the canvassing is not the swearing-in. So just to make sure everybody's aware, so that meeting will go quickly, but the 17th meeting will be when the new council members, Councilman Kale and Councilman Bradshaw are sworn in. So we'll need to coordinate a little bit. I'm not sure if, we might push executive session a little further back and to allow for a little more time prior to the meeting for us to go through some of the ceremonial aspects of saying goodbye to Councilmember Vialobos and Councilmember Sheil, as well as saying hello to the new council members. I think historically, we've started that about an hour ahead of time. So the agenda will probably look a little different on the 17th. I don't know if we need to bring some snacks, maybe Jennifer and Carla for that, for that time, but that'll be something we'll need to be coordinating. And I would like to say that, considering the significance of that meeting, that it certainly is my intention to be there in person, masked up and socially distanced. But, you know, obviously, I think those swearing-ins, if we can accomplish it, if we can accomplish safely, we should be done in person. Plus, it'd be nice to be together with the council again, all as one group for the first time since, what, April? I mean, I'm not sure when we went to this safer but more distanced format. But just as an FYI, that's my goal and my intention. Hopefully, the council can all be there on that day. Did I miss anything on that from a logistics standpoint, Scott?
I'm thinking out loud, but no, I think if we can have our special meeting to call the runoff election on the 10th, as well as do the canvas, I think we're set with everything.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, let's move on to, back to executive session.
Okay.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Sheil.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071; low-income development on Philomena; changeable electronic variable message sign; and item number seven, the City of Kyle's spending plan of the coronavirus relief funds.
Seven to zero. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be action taken now, or are we taking action out of executive session, or are we just bringing up item seven? I'm sorry.
Bring back item seven.
Bring up item seven.
Okay, so there was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Next up, agenda item number seven, and I apologize. Councilwoman Sheil, can you read the item for me, please?
Item number seven? Sure.
Yes.
Approve the City of Kyle's spending plan for the coronavirus relief funds for submission to Texas Department of Emergency Management, TETM, by the deadline of November 13th, 2020.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ellison.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the City of Kyle's spending plan for the coronavirus relief funds for submission to TETM by the deadline of November 13th, and authorize the city manager to adjust the plan and add or remove expenditures as appropriate in compliance with TETM guidelines.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Sheil. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero.
Mayor, go ahead.
Councilwoman Sheil?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Sheil, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nay. Motion carries six to one. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Get some rest. Crazy election night last night, so let's get some rest.